So she would go from thirty to thirty-two. These are just recommendations.
There was, right now, we have a, and then John.
Well, we have personal health insurance.
In our tax office, we have a full-time and a part-time.
Mm-hmm.
They suggest we have two full-time?
I saw, based on your budget, you had thirty-seven point five and thirty hours.
Hmm, twenty-eight?
No, I, I saw that.
I know she's a part-time, without benefits. Yeah, no benefits, so it has to be twenty-eight or less. But his, his, his ask was to go full-time.
But it's unclear in there.
I know.
But you'll look that up. The ten thousand from the Parks and Rec for the, that's the co- wellness program. I asked that that be eliminated. The plan's not well thought out. Suggestion would be to contact regional groups to deal with the opioid heroin addition, to, to reach out to network providers that are willing to make take-after-call hours, to look into coordinated access network. That's a two-one-one system that we run as nonprofits, that everybody does a little piece without any direct impact. Your text message from the Waterford Police Department during that discussion about how they handle that, that that should be pursued, but I think it's just not there yet.
I agree.
And for that reason. And then I have twenty thousand from various town operating accounts for a total of one hundred thousand dollars. Then I'm asking that a contingency account for capital of five thousand, Line Island, for the Samuel Smith House, because that's gonna, however that's dealt with down the road. Thinking about the ADA bathroom, we have to start planning as that gets discussed with governance or, you know, with the documents and what that means, we have to start putting money aside for tho- for those purposes. In terms of the capital long-term plan, which I don't have, I want the abounding bonding amount to be reduced for each fiscal year, and items selected to be taken off that. If we're talking about a school construction project coming either now or sometime in the future, or never at all, whatever, we need to start bringing down the debt seal, the debt portion of the budget. And even though it, it's not much, every little bit would help as a long-term impact. So the only thing that I know that would be on the bonding calendar this year would be the road, the road jobs that were talked about, and that would be the only thing that I support. And I don't know, I wanted to get a clarification on what is our typical, which I'll see soon, bonding amount, because I think we should pull out all those school items that we have on there forever. It talks about windows and energy replacement.
All that's good.
That needs to be gone, because that gives a false assumption of proposed debt that's not real. And then, so I guess I'll have more on that. And then the last recommendation. And I know this comes up a lot, but to invite a board of finance member, this is on the town side. I know that they, they did sit onsite on the Board of Education negotiations. To sit in negotiations for any upcoming union or non-union contracts, because obviously the best of the best are beyond affiliated. Doing that and creating a subcommittee, this is a recommendation, to follow the trends of municipalities across the state and how they deal with longevity, insurance, and different things, and what, what, what movements are best practices on the municipal level. Because that's one thing that we can, we know the state is different, but that might be, give us an idea how to better focus on long-term planning so that we're not just putting money in a contingency and saying, oh, we gotta negotiate a contract. We don't know what it's gonna be, but I'm gonna put a hundred and forty thousand over here. That would give us some type of budget stability, whatever it is and whatever it's meant to be, that we can meet that, and then realize potential savings in tax dollars. But, but looking at it not just like union, gee, there needs to be union, non-union, and other types of contracts, because it all plays a role in that. And so maybe CCM has groups that are starting to discuss those impacts, like they're gonna be doing at the state level, you need to, you know. And maybe that would be a good idea to do a subcommittee that, to do that research, if it's helpful. I think it would be. That's it.
Thank you, Beth. Bill?
So I think one of the things we talked about.
You speak into the mic a little bit more.
I will.
Thank you.
One of the things we talked about was formalizing the quoting process that we were going forward with. So I'd like to see that, some kind of structure around that. I think the other thing that we struggled with a bit was also the reporting by type. If we could see a format that let us compare electrical costs between different facilities and, and phone costs and all those other things that we've kind of struggled with a bit. When I go through by department, the tax collector, I think, is gonna be challenged. Kind of what I wanted to do with these things, that I think there's risk in the budget, is, is opposed to giving that department necessarily the budget. I think we need to add it to contingency so that if it does come to fruition, it'll be available. And if it doesn't, then we can use it in other areas. So as I go through, just want to acknowledge the tax collector risk. When I go down through the registers, the extra referendums, I think is a risk of, of up to ten thousand dollars for additional referendum, three hundred dollars for the privacy booth, and some unknown risk for an electronic counter. So I want to acknowledge that under the one-ten. Under community services, I think we need a long-term vision for the historic properties. I wouldn't, at this time, add a budget to that for the buildings and for the curator and the other things that were discussed. But I would like to also move that into the contingency fund, some amount to fund that F- that, that work or that scope that I think will be coming up as the year goes on. So then when I get to one-twenty for the contingency, I look at what was adopted in 2016 versus what was budgeted. And I think what was budgeted this year is, is tight. I think the registers has probably got about eleven thousand dollars at risk. I think community, community services is twenty to thirty thousand dollars at risk. So I think we need to add that forty thousand dollars to the contingency half of that one-twenty. Beyond that, I concur with the removing the counselor for ten thousand dollars from the park and rec. And then I had a question, and I, maybe this should have gone under old business, about the five-twenty-two for interest and principal. If I look in the book under interest, it says one million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. If I look at the summary sheet that we had, it says one thousand, two hundred seventy-one, two sixty-one. So there's five thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars in delta there. And then if I look in the principal section, I see three million, uh, three million, nine hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-one in the book. If I look at the summary sheet, I see three million, nine sixty-four fifty-four. So there's.
Why don't we just do that right now?
There's.
It was a correction, and we identified it. Good catch.
On the night, on the night that we discussed the interest in the principal department, the original submission, as you stated, for the interest was one million, two hundred seventy-one thousand,
Okay.
two sixteen. But on the night that we discussed it, we gave you an updated page for one million, two seventy-seven, one sixty-two, and indicated that we would need to increase that department by five thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, because we did not include it in the original submission.
So the two seventy-seven is the correct number?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and the same.
I missed that part of the conversation, sorry.
It's the same for, for the interest. We had inadvertently left the funding out for the principal and interest, which is about twenty thousand combined.
So the three nine seven six one ninety-one is the correct number?
That, yes.
Okay.
We'll be adding that into the budget.
Okay. So beyond that, that's, that's, um, I, I have a bunch of notes about the school, which kind of, I would like to look into the solar and see if that was cost-effective. I think that there's a lot of things that the, the Board of Ed did that was good. I'm concerned that we don't have a real clear vision of the Board of Ed's budget, because there was a lot of mushy numbers in there. In the event that we do go forward with a new building, I think it's important to get that clean so that we know that we get the, the best of the best, that we know that we have best practices and lessons learned and all that stuff rolled into any new building. So I think that reporting has to be cleaned up as well. And beyond that, I think that's all else I have.
Thank you, Bill. Camille?
Okay. I'll try not to read too much, but I wanted to type it all out so I don't miss any important points. I'll start with the Board of Education's operational budget first, which was presented to us on March seventeenth. And at that time, I was inclined to support their budget as it was presented. In the past five weeks, I've listened to some viewpoints that were in favor of reducing the Board of Education budget further. And even though I greatly respected these opinions and viewpoints, they were, they weren't strong enough to change my original inclination. So therefore, I am resolute in this evening in supporting the Board of Education budget as it was presented to us. And I will recap the five biggest reasons that I have for taking that position. Number one, I did attend a number of the labor contract negotiations, and I reviewed data that outlined how the teachers in our schools were underpaid relative to our Derg as well as other districts in New London County. I fully supported the increases in salaries over the next three years in order to be more competitive and also to better align compensation with performance, which I think everyone in town can agree is quite outstanding. Two, the superintendent's proposed budget was reduced one percent by the Board of Education members. And I'm sure that was a difficult task to accomplish for those members, and I do appreciate their efforts. I know their focus is to concentrate on what is best for the students, but I really believe that this year was a, you know, very cooperative endeavor to try to keep in mind the welfare of everybody in the town. The Board of Ed faces increases to their budget beyond their control. We all know this. It, it involves rising insurance premiums, transportation costs, and special education costs that are escalating at an alarming rate, and that's just to name a few. They also have the, at the additional burden of covering unfunded state mandates. And they risk losing education cost-sharing revenues from the state as the state tries to close their ever-widening budget gap. Four, the Board of Ed has made progress in reducing staffing levels to match the declining student population. This reduction would have been greater if not for the implementation of the full-day kindergarten curriculum. I believe that this progress will continue as the Board moves to consolidate three elementary schools down to two. I think at this point, it's prudent to recognize that there was a blip in that trend this year with regard to student population. There were actually twenty more students enrolled in our schools this year than originally projected. This is a true testament to East Lime School System being a very large draw for families moving into our community. And while this blip may not reverse the downward trend as depressingly outlined in the day's article the other day, we do need to tread carefully as staffing levels are aligned to student population. And lastly, I think that the Board of Education has made some very hard decisions with regard to the proposed capital expenditures of the elementary schools. Rather than requesting an estimated fifty-eight million dollars in funds to build and renovate as new two elementary schools at once, they have made the very hard choice to tackle one school at a time. This approach requires an estimated thirty-four million dollars in funds. These are round numbers, I'm sure, I'm sure you understand. This action clearly demonstrates to me that they carefully considered the needs and welfare of our entire town by not trying to put such a large tax burden on the taxpayers all at one time. And they also made a very difficult choice to propose returning Niantic Center School to the town, recognizing indeed that the facility is the very one that can actually bring additional tax revenues to our town, whether that's through the leasing of the building or selling it outright. It's important to recognize as we have additional revenues brought into our town that that will only lead to continued investment in our fine school system. So, to repeat, I fully support the Board of Education's budget as presented. Now I'll speak to the general government's budget. When I started this process, my initial goal for this year's entire town budget was to try to keep the budget increases at a level that would keep the mill rate the same. I felt that it was necessary to rein in the operational budget of the general government because I knew that capital projects coming down the road would burden the mill rate even further. This isn't, this isn't necessarily saying that one organization is doing a better job than another. It's simply how I think initiatives should be prioritized for us at this point in time. I was prepared to cut the general government budget to a level where that goal could be achieved. However, after sitting down with our finance director, Ms. Johnson, and she put a lot of hard data in front of me, it became apparent to me that we would have to cut well over one and a half million dollars from this year's proposed budget in order to achieve my original goal. The general government requested budget increase, increase this year is nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So what does that mean? It means that this year's budget would be lower than the previous year's budget, just in order to keep the mill rate the same. So as in the Board of Ed budget, the same applies to the general government budget, where there are unavoidable costs, such as rising insurance premiums, existing debt service payments, to name a few, and other factors out of the town's control, or levels of funding for state aid, such as pilot funds received from the state-owned properties in town. And we are receiving less and less money from the state in that regard. So after reviewing all of this data, I realized that I needed to come up with a more reasonable request for the reduction of the Board of Selectmen's proposed budget. So after going back to study all of that data and, and reaching out to many residents in our town to get a pulse on what type of increase they felt that they might be able to support, I calculated the dollar amount that would need to be trimmed in order to reduce the municipal budget increase from three point nine-nine percent to a more reasonable two and a half percent. That number is approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that is the minimum reduction I am seeking at this time. My rationale for seeking this reduction is based on a number of factors, some of which I'll summarize for you this evening. First is compensation. It's no secret that my opposition to the salary increases that were granted this year to both union and non-union personnel remains. While I do not argue the point that our town personnel are hardworking and productive, it is hard to support salary increases in the range of two and a half to six percent over the past couple of years, when the rate of inflation has ranged between point one and one point six percent for the same time period. The Board of Finance has repeatedly made requests to be present during the labor contract negotiations. Since we were not included in those discussions, it is difficult for me to understand the justification for those negotiated increases. With regard to non-union personnel, no evidence was brought forward to suggest that our employees were underpaid relative to their responsibilities. In years past, the town opted to continue to fund full-time positions when the volume of work didn't necessarily warrant a full-time position. When the volume of work increases, I do not think it's fair to hire additional personnel to handle the workload. It's simply not fair to have it both ways. My second point is with regard to the review of the budget by the Board of Selectmen. They approved the first selectmen's budget as it was presented to them. When I reviewed the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting of February twenty-fourth, however, I noticed a few valid questions or challenges to the proposed budget, and yet no motions were made to adjust the budget accordingly. I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen revisit their prior concerns as well as identify new opportunities to bring the budget in line with the bottom number this board eventually proposes this evening. Three, I think that it's probably a good idea to put town capital projects on hold until after the elementary school building project has been settled. I really don't like to deal with unknowns, and I, if that project gets passed, it will create an additional burden to our town. And the last point that I would like to make is that when the Gateway Commons Project came to town and it was being proposed, representations were made that it would be good for the town, because it would reduce our taxes. Well, it's not, it's not very likely that that would ever happen. But it is possible that we can manage budget increases to the same level as revenue increases. And that is my expectation for the Board of Selectmen next year as our grant list continues to climb with the additional building and activity in the town, whether it's from Costco, the Vil- the Village Niantic condominiums, from the new Optomology building that's going in next to Bob's Discount. We have a lot of activity that's going to increase our grant list and therefore create additional revenues. And I would just, for once, like to see us manage our expenses from the Board of Ed as well as the general government to manage it to the increase that we get from the increased revenues. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Camille. Steve, are you there? Steve?
All right, he's thinking about it, I guess. I will add, this is from Jason Pizaglia, who is not here this evening, but his recommendations for the budget, although he's not in a position to vote tonight, he's, his budget, he recommends a budget increase of no more than two and a half percent for this year's general town budget, and a budget increase of no more than three point three percent for the Board of Education budget. For myself, I first would like to start with reviewing what our state fiscal picture is right now. I think everyone is, you there, dude? Steve?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna, are you in a position to go next and talk about your thoughts on the budget?
Go ahead, I'm, I was having trouble here, but, go ahead, you, you go.
All right. So I'm sure everyone's familiar with what's going on on the state level. Current projected deficit for fiscal year fifteen sixteen, ending June thirtieth, thirtieth this year, is up to two hundred and twenty million, up from projections originally of fifty-five million. Deficit projections for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, beginning July first, are beginning at nine hundred million. My bet is it's unlikely that it will stay at nine hundred million. A little background for our, from our surrounding towns of articles that have just recently been in the day. Kim, I'm giving you a plug back there for the day. So if you've read the paper, you'll know that Groton, Town of Groton is searching for millions of dollars of budget cuts to try to hold their taxes steady. I think they've lost a lot of tax revenue from Pfizer's withdrawal, among other high contributors to their tax base. Legerd proposes a three percent increase. Before any cuts, Stonington received a budget of two point eight percent increase. North Stonington received a budget, a Board of Education budget of one point nine seven percent increase. That's on the heels of a zero budget increase for the two previous years. Norwich proposes to cut seventy teacher positions. Lime Old Lime budget increase, two point eight four percent. Montville, one point nine percent. Waterford has declined all salary increases for elected officials. And New London is working toward a zero tax hike. That's the background in which we have to work. And our collective proposed budget increase, both Board of Ed and general government, is three point seven four percent. So we can see that our proposed budget is the highest of all of our surrounding communities. So I'll give you what I think are some recommendations for where we could make some adjustments and be, opportunities to, to gain here a little bit. But I will underscore that these are recommendations. Clearly, our first selectman is the CEO of our town, and it's up to him to decide where to make the cuts. I will echo Beth's recommendation on creating a subcommittee to review our salaries with other municipalities. We, we have to change our mindset, and I believe, and get out of the mentality that we're in right now. Budget increases from three to almost six percent, just this year alone, are, are just not acceptable anymore. The private sector can hardly afford to pay their folks three percent. And these pay increases, while all these folks can be doing great jobs, it's just, the economic climate has changed, and as far as I'm concerned, it's unacceptable. Whether we call them step increases, COLA increases, we can call them anything we want. The bottom line is, these percentages are too high, they're unfair with the rest of the private sector, and they need to change. And there are several departments that are over five percent increases. I'm not gonna read them all here, but I, I know, Mark knows what they are. So that's something that, we have got to begin that change. I recognize that is not easy. I understand union negotiations are complex. But that is not a reason to not take that on. It just has to be done. I also looked at some of our large budgets, because I'm not gonna go through a line by line in every department, but the budgets that take up a higher percentage, I looked at, and I think that they can be reviewed for some efficiencies. Our police department, I know there's a resident trooper line that increased that budget by thirty thousand dollars, but a seven point seven increase is, is just too high for that department. And that really needs to be looked at, whether it's overtime that we improve on, whether we review our, our equipment that we're looking to buy. We just have to review, and as Ms. Rack said, there's a difference between want and need, and they're hard choices to make, but we have to do that. Same thing with Niantic and Flanders Fire Departments. Again, those salary increases are higher than they should be. Our overtime budget is up in Niantic Fire Department, and there is opportunity in both of those departments to save money. All of my colleagues, I think, identified that the counselor position in Parks and Recs is not the right fit. I don't need to belabor that. Public Works, the bottom line increase, let's see, we went, we're not rounding around about this the other night because we had different report dates, but we're not assured, I don't believe, all the town aid road funding that we could get from the state on that. And that's one of the largest budgets we have. I think there's probably thirty thousand dollars we could cut out of line four forty for storm materials. I know that was an estimate going forward, but I think that's inflated, and, and we don't, we don't need that much. Our, our capital plan increase is currently nine point five four percent. It, it's too high. For where we are, that needs to be reviewed, and I think there's some, whether we have to delay some of our vehicle acquisition or what we have to do, but we have to reduce our capital plan. Regarding our many discussions on the Samuel Smith House, curators and the like, we're not gonna solve that in this meeting tonight, but clearly we have some work to do to address our historic properties in town. Personally, I support having a part-time curator. I think we have some valuable historic properties in town, and they need to be managed. I don't believe fourteen thousand dollars is an excessive amount of money to preserve those properties. I can, it's very obvious that Samuel Smith, friends of Samuel Smith have done a lot of work, and there has been a misunderstanding in terms of what the town's responsibility was and what the, the friends' responsibility was. I have reviewed the minutes myself when the property was bought, and it was, although I think in good faith, it was stated that the friends would pick up any maintenance going forward, because I read the minutes myself, and I know every one of you are good people who are trying to work on this. And it might have been a promise that was made in good faith, but clearly that can't be executed right now. And I, I mean, we have to make some hard choices. We're either gonna, I don't know what they're gonna be. We're not gonna solve them here, but we, I think, need to lean into each one of those properties and, and gain some results on the economy of scale with both of those properties. I'm not really sure why the Thomas Lee Group never comes to us. Maybe they're funded through the state, that's what it is.
They have an endowment, they've been together for a hundred years.
Yeah.
They've created endowments and.
They've created endowments, and money's been left to them in the will. We do give them on one of the lines in community services under Historic Society. We give them about a two thousand dollar stipend, which, if you read the minutes, you knew that. We also mentioned probably giving two hundred, two thousand dollars a year to Sam Smith. That was in the minutes, actually, so, you know, it's, it's that stipend that we're aiming for.
So I think, I, I just wanna end that piece of the discussion on the, on the historic properties. Say, the town just needs to come together on that. We just got divergent somehow. I'm not sure exactly what the answers are, but I, I, I want to work together with those groups and come up with some creative ways to raise funds and to create a Historic Properties Commission, so that going forward, there may be other properties that we could cultivate. And our town is really rich in those resources, and they deserve our attention. So, long-term potential savings, I, I alluded earlier, there really needs to be a paradigm shift to adapt to the current economy, and I think we can learn a lot from the private sector. We already talked about salaries. They need to be brought in line closer to the private sector. This is gonna be hard to say, but my opinion is we need to begin discussions on phasing out pensions. I don't know anybody in the private sector that's getting a pension anymore. And I know we're gonna say, oh, that's not gonna happen in municipalities, and, and maybe it's not, but I think it needs to be explored, or the amount of pensions. And, and maybe our collective discussion, when we benchmark with other municipalities, is, that's not the way we need to go, but I think we need to address it and talk about it. Paying out holiday pay, like six weeks vacation, I, I don't understand why we still do that in the private sector. Your vacation time is meted out for quarters, so if you have six weeks vacation, you get sixty hours per quarter, and if you leave, then, and that's why they do that, because you don't walk away with six weeks of salary. That is just too burdensome for the taxpayer, and we need to start thinking about creative ways to change that. It's just, we need to do something about that. I think there's probably some staffing levels, and perhaps not that many, but my gut tells me there's some staffing levels that can be reviewed. We talk about if, if work picks up, that kind of thing, but we'll have the people. Again, I, I, I'm in the private sector, and I, I can feel this. People just get, leave and don't get replaced, and we have to figure out how to make it work and how to do more with less, and our town is no different. And these are professional and hard-working people, and I know that they're capable of, of doing more. This was brought up by somebody in our town, but I wonder if it's something that we ought not to consider as well. We don't force folks on our town who work for the town or age sixty-five and over to use Medicare. They can still keep the town's insurance. Again, private sector, you hit sixty-five, it's mandatory that you move into Medicare. And I think that's something that we should explore. I think that, that's, there's a lot of funds, monies that go to Medicare and health insurance, and it's something, again, that we need to explore. These are all paradigm shifts, and I know they could be painful, and people may not like to hear them, but it's the reality we're living with. So, I too was also a little surprised there was no cuts from the Board of Selectmen after the budget was proposed. The many years that I've been on the board, six years now, I've, this is the first year that I've not received a budget that the Board of Selectmen hadn't made some cuts on. I'm not quite sure why that is, but I, it was, it's noteworthy.